Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Committee of the whole, seeing that we have a quorum. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Brown, here. Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller? Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marley?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meeting, January 21st, 2020. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by...
Dennis.
Who's it, Dennis?
Yeah, Dennis. Looks like there's a correction.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I have a correction.
Okay.
This is a really good summary of the Vision Zero discussion, but at the end, the motion says it was to direct BPAC to establish a Vision Zero task force. Actually, the motion was to direct BPAC to draft a council resolution that would establish a Vision Zero task force. So we're expecting to get a resolution back from BPAC. So I guess my change would be to insert draft a council resolution that would in there. I think Charlie understands that.
Okay. Any other changes in the minutes? Okay, can we vote on the approval? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? Presentations. We have some presentations tonight. Proclamation from Mayor Marley. Okay.
So this is a proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, National African American History Month is an occasion to rediscover African American, the enduring stories of African Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on future generations. And whereas, it is also a time to commemorate the contributions of Urbana's African American community that have enriched our community today. The city also acknowledges that African Americans in Urbana have lived through segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination, and we recognize the ongoing struggles in our African American citizens, the African American citizens who have to endure the environment in which they work, play, and live. And whereas, this next school year, 2020 to 2021, marks 55 years of the integration of Urbana schools. It was the first integrated public school district system in Illinois. This act of civil bravery, which was led by the Ellis Drive Six group of individuals in Urbana, is one of many examples of heroism, patriotism, and enterprise. And I'm proud to have with me today one of the Ellis Drive Six leadership team, Dr. Evelyn Burnett Underwood. The team also included Willetta and Carlos Donaldson, Shirley and Paul Percy, Charisse's father and mother, and Joanne Jackson, who is living in Urbana today. So these were amazingly great individuals who led the way to integrate the Urbana Public Schools. And by their example, Urbana's African Americans have given people of all backgrounds confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their dreams, no matter who they are or where they come. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf Marley, Mayor of the City of Urbana, can hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as African American History Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois.
I'm getting a little emotional here. Thank you, Mayor, for that. Thank you. Okay, we have another presentation for the audit report. Baker Tilly Financial Department.
So hello, everyone. I wanted to introduce Jo Lightcap, who is a partner with Baker Tilly. Jo is going to walk us through the FY '19 audit, but I want to point out a couple of things first. The audit reports are prepared on a different basis of accounting than the reports that you're used to receiving from us. The budget and quarterly reports the council normally receives are presented on a cash basis of accounting. The comprehensive annual report, or the CAFR, is presented on a modified accrual basis of accounting. So another thing that you might want to be aware of is that funds are presented in the CAFR in a different way than you're used to. For example, the general fund balance in the CAFR is a combination of the general fund and other funds, which are combined for presentation in the CAFR. All of the reports that Jo is going to be talking about tonight are available on the city's website.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for having me tonight. First off, I'd like to thank the Finance Office for all their help during the audit. We ask a great deal of questions. We ask for a lot of information, and the Finance Department is always very timely and thorough with the requests and dealing with us. So to them, I say thank you. So as Chris mentioned, there is the comprehensive annual financial report I'll go over tonight that I believe you have mainly electronically. I also have the communication to those charged with governance and management, and I'll talk briefly about the report on federal awards or the single audit. So as Chris said, the city once again issued a comprehensive annual financial report. As the name suggests, it's a comprehensive document. It's more of a financial report than is required in the minimum under accounting standards. It provides some additional transparency and information to the readers. It provides an introductory section, which has kind of a transmittal letter that talks about some of the more non-financial initiatives of the city. Also has, in the back, it has some statistical information, which gives some good financial trend information over the last 10 years and some information compared to 10 years prior. So it's a really good source of information for the city and, you know, to look at some financial information, historical trends to help make your decisions. I'm going to start off by going to page one, and I guess if you have it electronically when I mention page one, it'll be the bottom page or when I mention page numbers. This is the independent auditor's report. This is our opinion on the financial statements. Once again, we issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. It's the highest level of assurance you can obtain from your independent auditors. It states that everything, the financial information included, is reasonable in all material respects and can be reasonably relied upon by an outside user. There were no new accounting standards issued during the year. So if you were to kind of compare this document to prior year, you wouldn't see any significant changes. While the numbers and the information would change, kind of the presentation remains similar to prior years. And to point out, starting on page four is management's discussion and analysis. This is a high-level analysis written by management that talks about the current financial results compared to the prior year. It's a good high-level overview, and it's written where it's easier to understand than probably the rest of the information that's kind of written by accounting standards. This is kind of just the management's story on what happened. I want to go to, I want to pass that because it's very easy to understand. I want to pass that and go to the statement of net position, page 15. Page 15, we'll start there, I guess. This is, unlike information you'd see on a monthly basis, what this statement does is it takes the governmental activities, business-type activities, and the library and records it on the full accrual basis of accounting. I know Chris mentioned the modified accrual statements, we'll get to there. But this is the one time of the year where you see everything, all the assets, all the liabilities of the city. So it includes capital assets, includes long-term debt, pension-related information, and it comes down to the bottom line of total net position. On pages 16 and 17, you can see sort of the income statement on the full accrual level so you can see the change in net position for governmental activities. Net position increased by about $2.2 million. Business-type activities, which includes depreciation expense, decreased by about $92,000. On page 18 and 19, this is where you get into the fund-level information, sort of what you would see on a monthly basis with the addition of short-term receivables and payables. So one of the big numbers here is the property tax receivable, about $5.8 million. If you were to compare this to last year, you'd see a bit higher of a number due to the late receipt of the property taxes from the county. On page 23 and 24, this is the income statements of revenues and expenditures by fund. Overall, the city's fund balance, the bottom right corner of page 24, increased by about $5.3 million. A large driver of this were increases in the capital improvement and replacement fund and the motor fuel tax fund, where big projects weren't undertaken during the years with more maintenance. So it's maybe something where you'll see in future years of the spend-out of those funds. The general fund, on page 23, increased by about $2.4 million and has fund balance at the end of year a little over $15 million, which is about five and a half months of reserves. Going past kind of the financial information, you get into the pension trust fund statements. On page 32, you can see the pensions increased net position by about $2.4 million, which is good considering the poor investment returns that were received during the part of the year, pretty much through December of 2018. Following this is the notes to the financial statements, which has a lot of good detail on the different accounting policies of the city, different changes in assets and liabilities from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and a lot of good detail if you're looking for to see kind of more information on any of the different balances presented. Following the notes is the required supplementary information, which has some general fund budgetary highlights, has some trend information on the pension and OPAB liabilities for the city. One thing I wanted to point out there is with IMRF on page 91. In 2019, because this is valued as of December 31st, the comment I just made about investment returns, the net pension liability for IMRF is much higher than it had been in the past, mainly due to the poor market values at the end of the year. Now, those recovered into the beginning of 2019, which is why the pensions, the standalone police and fire pensions here at the city had better years than what IMRF had for the calendar year. Just wanted to point that out because it's a different kind of timing of everything that you have in these statements. Following that, there's some more individual fund information and the statistical section that I discussed previously. I didn't have any more detail to discuss, but definitely if there's any questions by the council, we can take those before moving to the next document.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Mary Alice?
So before I ask my question, are the next documents about the pension fund? Okay.
No, no, it's not. It's the non-financial highlights. We don't have the, if you had a pension financial question, it would be appropriate now.
Okay, thank you. So if I looked through, we didn't have hard copies of it, so we're all looking online trying to find the pages that you were referencing. So I apologize if my numbers in my memory are not correct. If I looked, I think that the police pension was at 85%, which was pretty consistent with the previous year. Is that right? No, fire, thank you. Fire was 85, and then police was, was it 65 or is it 63? 65, 64?
It's at 64.
It's at 64, and the previous year's it was at 68? Is that right?
That was a few years ago, 2016 it was at 64.
I was just looking at the previous one that was posted online. So you said that the financial markets were poorly performing?
During a part of the fiscal year. They recovered more in 2019. And you can see on page 93, I know it's hard to scroll through that, but you can see that kind of the investment, net investment income over the years, it was a little lower for 2019 than it had been in the past. But it's, my comment was IMRF is on a calendar year basis, and that you'll see, when you see those numbers, it's much worse than the police and fire pension numbers.
So I'm not sure if this is a question for Elizabeth or for you, but basically the pensions are funded by people committing their, part of their paycheck, and I think it's almost 10%, which was pretty high if I remember. As I said, I'm trying to remember these numbers off the top of my head. Then the city gives a contribution. Both of those are mandated, right? So the employer and the employee percentage is mandated. We don't have a choice, nobody has a choice in terms of whether or not those are paid.
Nobody, so for police and fire, the employee contribution, or the employer contribution isn't a percent of pay, it's based on an actuarial report that is prepared annually. And so actually, on both of those now, we're paying more than what's required in order to increase our funding level.
I think people are always concerned when they see that pensions are only funded at 65, 64%. And we've had this conversation before, and I just want to make the public aware that part of that rationale is because of the stock market.
That's part of it. So when the actuary prepares the report, they take a lot of things into account. So investment earnings can fluctuate year to year. You know, they go into great detail looking at mortality tables, how long are people going to live, and therefore, how much are we going to pay in benefits? There's a very long list of things that they consider, and changes in any of those can cause fluctuations.
So were there any major changes to ours other than the investment income this year?
I would have to go back and look at the actuarial reports, which I do not have with me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, is that it? Thank you.
No, we have a couple more reports.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The next report is the communication to those charged with governance and management. This is our report, the non-financial highlights of the audit. This document satisfies a few different auditing standards that we're allowed, that we're required to report on. And the first one is the report on internal control. So when we come in to do the city's audit, we look at the internal control over the significant transaction cycles and not to provide an opinion on internal control, but to determine the nature, timing, and extent of our audit procedures. So if there's an area that has less controls, weaker controls, we focus more on that area. If there are areas that we feel that city council should know about, we put those in this letter. There are two comments that we reported on this year, one over external financial reporting, which is the result of Baker Tilly preparing the comprehensive annual financial report on behalf of the city of the Finance Department. While they take responsibility and they understand the information in there, we have the kind of the detailed knowledge of what is required to be presented to conform with accounting standards and GFOA standards. So just because that expertise kind of lies with us, that's where we're required to put that comment in there, and it's a comment you've received in the past. The second comment is the segregation of duties over payroll. In the past, I just kind of talked about what you'd seen in the past. There were a few other comments. With the integration of the new GL system in the current year, there have been improvements in the internal control structure, and so some of the comments you've seen in the prior year have not been reported again, which is great. You always want to see that improvement. And in terms of this comment that we've given in the past, this is kind of, a lot of this is a timing issue. The munis payroll section was done in September of 2018, so during a part of the year, there was a comment that we reported in here that was kind of, the system helped out with that during the later part of the year, but since there was a timing during the audit where these controls weren't in place, we were required to, we felt it was important for the council to know about this one. But here, too, we're hopeful that, you know, with the continuation of the munis system, that this comment and the other good compensating controls that the Finance Department has in place, that this comment will go away for the next audit report. But we'll have to, of course, come in and look at that, but that's kind of our hope where we're going with that.
Could you speak, could you pull the mic closer so that we can, because something's getting lost there? I'm not even hearing everything.
Okay, sorry. What should I go back to or?
Just move forward.
Okay. Following the report on internal control is the two-way communication regarding your audit. This part of the audit is kind of to remind council that we work for you. While we work with finance to prepare the audit, we work for council. And if you have any questions, concerns, any areas that you feel like we should spend more time on, we're always open to those conversations. So please reach out to us at any time to discuss any areas of concern. Or, you know, if there's ever any more detail you wanted to go into about this presentation, we can do that as well. The next section is communication of informational points. This kind of gives you an update of upcoming accounting standards that'll impact the city's financial statements, just kind of a quick overview of the things coming down. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board likes to implement new standards frequently, so there are a handful coming down over the next several years. Some may impact the city, some may not, but this just gives you some more information. We'll work with finance to implement those standards as they come due. The final section of the report is the required communication. So this is a pretty boilerplate letter, which is good. If there were any disagreements with management or troubles performing the audit, they would be listed out in this letter. Thankfully, we're happily to report that there are no such issues to tell council about. And then following this letter, there's representations from management over the city's audit and the police and fire pension audit. Just kind of gives you an idea of the things that we ask for and the things that management has provided to us. With that, I'd open this letter up to questions as well.
Dennis?
And am I right that this is, this audit is for the city of Urbana, but it has nothing to do with our township? Is that correct?
It does not include the township, includes the library.
The library. Okay.
That's included in the financial report. They also get a separate report, but because of the way the structure of the library is and it's also required to be in your financial statements.
Okay. And there's been an improvement then about the oversight of payroll signing and disbursement of funds?
Correct.
That's been an important correction for us. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, Bill?
Yeah. If this is too technical, I can probably ask somebody else later, but back to the CAFR on page 130 versus 133, I was kind of comparing those two. It's a change in net position versus a change in fund balance. And for most departments across the years, it was pretty consistent, but for public safety, it went from like $16 million in early years up to $22 million in later years when you look at the change in net position. But when you look at the change in fund balance, it's more consistent. Can you briefly say, explain what kind of circumstances would result in a higher change in net position than change in fund balance?
Well, a couple of big things that would impact net position and wouldn't impact fund balance is the net pension liability. So depending on when the year's, the expense for that would go straight to public safety, whereas fund balance, it's more of what the contribution level is year over year.
Okay. You think that's a main difference then, Elizabeth?
I think it's likely, but we can take a peek at the details that, you know, go underlie this and double-check that. But that makes sense, yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Any more questions? Any more presentations?
There is one more report. I'm not sure, I won't go over it in a lot of depth at all, but it's the report on federal awards. So every year, the city expends over $750,000 in federal awards, and we're required to perform an audit on the federal awards. While we issued unmodified reports, as we have in the past, there was one finding this year over sub percipient monitoring, over reviewing audits of organizations that federal funds flow through from the city to them. I believe that's been something that the city has worked on to look at those reports going forward, but that is a change that you would see in this report compared to prior years.
Okay, Eric?
Maybe this should come at another time, but if, this is purely hypothetical, I have no reason to suspect that the situation exists or will exist in the foreseeable future. But if more money was being expended in a particular budget item than, you know, a particular item than had been budgeted, would that be flagged in any automatic way? Or does that depend on an individual to spot that and pursue it and bring perhaps our attention to it?
So that really isn't something that the auditors would be looking for, but I can tell you that in our financial system, if somebody tries to enter a transaction or request for payment or, you know, a purchase order that exceeds budget, it will stop them and not allow them to proceed. Now, you know, we have the ability to override that, but not, there are only a few people in, sorry, only a few people in finance who could do that, and we would only do that if we knew, for example, that, you know, there was a budget amendment pending or there was a budget transfer that was in process, but just not completed and something was urgent and had to be taken care of.
Okay, great. I just want to reiterate, I don't suspect that anything like that is happening or would happen at any time with our cast of characters. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's monitored pretty well in our system.
Any other questions? Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okeydoke. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have public input. In our public input, not to be addressing the council, the committee, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Burnett Underwood regarding the Ellis Drive subdivision sewer problem, and she does not wish to address the committee. We are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Thank you. And I have two other public input cards, which they want to come and speak at the time of the item on the agenda. This is from Patricia Singer, I believe, amendment, I'm sorry, Patrick Singer. Sorry. He wants to speak regarding when it's on the agenda, amendment of liquor code, chapter three, liquor. Okay. And Vanessa Robinson amending, and you don't have here, is Vanessa here? Did you want to speak at the time of the, on the agenda? Okay. Amending the Urbana City Code, chapter three, alcohol liquor. And so the two of you will be asked to come up when we get ready to discuss that. Is there any other public input today? Staff report. Somebody? Did you want to speak now? Can you fill out one of these and? No, just go get one and then come up. You can fill it out, you can fill it out as you speak.
Sorry.
No, when you don't know, you just don't know.
No apologies. We're just grateful you're interested enough to come and talk to us. Sometimes we get lonely.
Yeah. You can just come on up to the table here. And yeah. All right.
Do I come sit here and hand you this?
Yeah. Yes, you do, and right in front of the mic, and so we can hear what you got to say, and so can all of Urbana Public Access. Thank you.
Do you want to read that first? My sloppy handwriting.
Amory Gardner, thank you.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, I did that wrong. My name's Amory Gardner, and I am here on behalf of a local business in your area, and I want to discuss, recently the state changed a law regarding sixth machines, VGT machines. You're probably all aware of that. So my understanding is that you guys are going to keep the ordinance that you have in place for five VGT machines. So I just wanted to address that. I'm not sure why you've decided to do that or what your reasoning is, and I'm not sure how the process goes, if there's going to be discussion on it, but I just want to speak on behalf of the businesses. So basically, how it works, you guys all probably know this, but for anyone who doesn't, there's a retailer, terminal operator, and then the government side that gets their revenues from it. So I'm on behalf of the retail side. So for the retail side, we have the most cost. You know, we have the You know, we have the, the, you know, the rent, staff, all of our food expenses, you know, your local restaurants, bars, cafes, whatever it may be. So we have all of the overhead expense, the majority. Then there's our terminal operator that puts the machines in, and then the state. Everybody gets a percent. Well, when the state changed the law to add the sixth machine, they actually cut back the percent of our income. And I don't know if everybody realizes that, but it actually changed the amount of revenue that we get. So here, we actually have a higher cost than the other parties getting revenue. And in addition to our cost, we also get less revenue now, with the understanding that they were going to allow us this sixth machine. In addition to that, a year or so ago, we used to be able to share, the terminal operators used to be able to share our food costs with us. They already took away that. So we could no longer share our food cost. You know, they used to be able to pay us back a portion of, like, our food costs that we, that we did for players. So they took that away, so we were kind of struggling with that because we have more cost. And then now they're taking a part of our revenue. And as you guys probably know, minimum wage is going to continue to go up. So it's just making it harder for all of the retail side. So I just wanted to come express that. Again, I don't know what your reasons are, but it does impact the retail portion of those of us in that business.
Mayor Marlin?
Amory, originally, a retail operator received 35% of the revenue. What did the state cut your share to?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. And did the state take the other 3%?
I believe, that's my understanding. I'll have to go back and double check. I don't actually handle that part of it, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Then, Bill?
Did they change the percent for, for anybody that adds a machine? Because a lot of places only start out with two or three machines and they probably won't add any, anyway. So are they getting cut to 32% as well, or just the places that already have five?
Everybody. Yep. All the retail places are cut back. And that already took effect before they even gave us the sixth. Like, as soon as they changed that law, I believe it was August, we've been cut back since then. So we've been waiting for them to say, okay, now you can get, get the additional one. And so those, I'm not sure which places only have the two or three, but they could go ahead and get it, get more now. I don't know if it's like because of a lack of space or why. So yeah, that's unfortunate. They might want to be able to squeeze another one in somehow. Yeah.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Do you represent a particular tavern or bar or business, or do you represent a agent that represents dick gaming?
I'm actually with Dottie's.
Dottie's.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And we do sell food and other stuff as well.
What, what fraction of capacity do these machines operate at currently? Are they fully occupied or near fully occupied or?
You mean like during the day? How much time?
Yeah, right.
It varies. Definitely not like 100% of the day. No way at all. So, you know, at lunchtime, they're busier, definitely when people are coming in. Slower in the mornings. I would say busiest is during lunch and then probably, you know, you're like three to six o'clock timeframe. And then again, in the evenings. It fluctuates, though. We also are busier probably during weekends. You know, slower Sundays, Mondays.
How common is it to have all five of the machines in your establishment occupied?
It does happen. We do have all five busy. The nice thing is with a six one, it adds another variety. We can bring in one more different type. So we've had people asking for quite some time, when are you going to get your six one? When are you getting your six one? Because it gives them one more option. But we do, we do sometimes have five full, but it's more about having that variety than having, having all of them at once. But there are times that we would get that, and so it would add that extra, you know, that extra revenue during that times, because otherwise if they're full, then someone turns and leaves, you know? And so it would help, definitely.
Bill?
As part of that bill, they also raised the maximum payout, didn't they?
I don't know that that's taken effect, but yes, they did change the law that you could increase it. I believe it's going to go up. There was two different things in there that haven't actually taken effect yet, but they are going to have some, and I don't even know if they've figured out how they're going to do it, but it's going to be some like increasing thing, and I think it's going to be shared to everyone, or they don't know how they're going to do it. So I'm not sure how that's going to play out, but it's going to be some like.
So currently it's $500, is that right?
Oh, that, I don't, that's not going to change. The, the max hit is going to be $500. That's not going to change.
Oh, but there might be some kind of cumulative?
It's going to be like a cumulative thing, like to where you can have a, yeah. And I think that'll be between everybody. Or that's the part that I haven't figured out yet. So it would be like all the different restaurants, bars, facilities would have like one, like one big pot, I believe. And I think that's the dilemma they're trying to decide.
The maximum, that's still $2, is that what?
That's the other one that's going to change, I think, to four. And they haven't done that yet.
Do you know when that goes into effect?
I don't.
Thanks.
That's, that's the, the powers that be that aren't me. Sorry. Any other questions?
Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I have a question for you. I guess is this something that could potentially, you know, be up for change around an agenda, or should I just follow up to?
That I would not be aware of. Mayor Marlin?
It's not scheduled at this point.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Eric?
I'll just speak for myself. I'm only one councilperson, but I, you know, my perspective is that anything is always eligible to be considered if you, you know, push hard to draw it to our attention. The, I'll just say personally, what I would like to know, the thing that I've always been concerned about with respect to the introduction of the machines is problem gambling. I mean, I mean, most, I know that most people who play the machines, you know, do it within their entertainment budget.
That's the goal, right.
But that some fraction of people, you know, just.
It can create issue.
It, it, it really becomes a problem. And so just speaking for myself personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but speaking for myself personally, my consideration about this and my discussion about it would be, on any aspect of this, would be, would any change contribute significantly to problem gambling? And, you know, and I don't know the answer to that. I have a completely open mind. I could see it, you know, both ways. But that would be uppermost in my mind.
Right. Yeah.
Mayor Marlin?
I do want to remind folks that this is public input session.
Right, we're not discussing.
And this isn't a discussion item on the agenda, so we have to limit discussion.
Okay. So thank you for your input.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I also have another public input card here from Wayne Williams. He is opposed to reducing the age of to, I can't read his writing, in a Class A liquor establishment. He does not wish to address the members, but he's in opposition at reducing the age. And the other public input people will come up when the item is on the agenda. So moving on, we have staff report. Mayor Marlin? Was that it?
Is there any other staff to report?
Any other staff?
No. Okay. I'll go then. First of all, I wish to wish Reese a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're spending your birthday with us tonight. Second, yeah, that's what those flowers are for.
Because you don't have a friend like Bridget.
You're kind of ugly, Dennis.
I didn't say that.
Secondly, I, I, we haven't been together since the announcement about the sale of the Landmark Hotel was made last, last Monday night. In fact, as we were here, our papers were being signed on the hotel. So I just wanted to thank everyone who's been on us with this, really, it's been a 10-year journey. We're about to embark on a $15 million renovation of the Landmark Hotel to a boutique historic Hilton Tapestry. City Council and every single department in the city had a hand in this over the years to get us to this point. And I especially want to highlight our negotiating team. And this, this development agreement and this deal took months and months and months of work and many conversations to, to get an agreement that, that achieved our goals with the acceptable risk for taxpayer dollars. So Community Development Department, Services Department, John Schneider, former director, current director, Lori Pearson, Economic Development Manager, Brandon Boyce, Economic Development Analyst, Will Kolchowski, Legal Department, Jim Simon. The negotiations themselves were really led by Carol Mitten, who did a fabulous job in getting, getting the terms that we needed to really get us to this point. So I can't wait to be at the grand reopening of this hotel. And it will be the biggest party we've ever seen in this community for a long time. So, and I also want to thank the community. This building evokes very strong emotions, both negative and, you know, some negative and lots of positive. And I'm especially touched by the memories that people share from, from what they experienced in the Lincoln Hotel and the Jumers and now Landmark Hotels. So the public has been with us on, on this journey as well, and we're very grateful for their interest and continued support. Next up is an item I don't want to celebrate, but I do have to announce, and that is Council Member Dean Hazen has announced that he's going to be stepping down from the City Council effective February 25th, 2020. We're extremely sorry to see you go and have appreciated your service and perspective on the council. And there will be a lot more to say after that, but, well, I'll let you talk. Do you want to talk for just a second?
I'll have a statement later down the road when we get closer to the 24th, but I appreciate your kind words.
Thank you. I do want to let folks know that there will be a press release going out on this in the morning. Applications will be available for the city council vacancy in Ward Six will be available online from the city's homepage. Also, we have print copies at the city clerk's office on the first floor here and in the Urbana Free Library. I'll be taking applications until February 21st, which is a Friday. That will be followed by interviews with the candidates. And we'll do exactly like we did filling the vacancy in Ward Three. I'll invite the candidates to speak to council, give a statement in front of city council so you can meet them. And also, the public can, can be introduced to folks. And then I hope, it would be on March 2nd, and I hope to be able to bring a recommendation for appointment to March 9th. We want to minimize the amount of time this seat is left vacant. So spread the word. This will be qualifications and, you know, criteria will be available in the application packet and online. So this is for Ward Six in the City of Urbana. And this appointment person will fill out the seat until the next city council election, which is in April, well, the seat will be assumed in May of 2021. So this is to fill out the next 15 months or so. And again, we'll, we'll, this will, Dean's resignation will take effect on February 25th. And last, just a quick announcement, I, I know there's a number of media here and people in the audience, and I'm sure you're all here, about liquor. I do want to let you know that the item on the agenda tonight is for, is up for discussion only. This is a committee of the whole meeting. I fully expect it to stay in committee. So this is the first time we've had a public discussion in council on the liquor ordinance. It's been in the works for about 10 months. This is a complete rewrite, chapter three of our liquor code. Based on considerable feedback we've had on, and actually, there's been a lot of attention focused on one small part of this enormous undertaking, and that has been the change in the entry age for bars, for Class A liquor license holders. Based on considerable feedback we've had today and a discussion with Jared Miller, who conveyed messages from a number of business owners, we expect that the entry age will stay at 18, but we will be looking at a all ages rider for 14 to 17 in response to requests from some bar owners. So no action will be taken on this item tonight. And you're welcome to stay for the entire discussion. And it will be thorough, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Marlin. So the first, the next item that's up on the agenda is ordinance number 202002003, ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1407 West Beslan Street, Urbana, Illinois, to Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County. And this is the Community Development Department. Thank you, Sheila.
Good evening. The property in question had a dilapidated, abandoned structure on it that was quite a neighborhood nuisance. The city acquired it with CDBG funds and then demolished it through a program with Illinois Housing Development Authority. So currently, the lot is green space. There's nothing on it. Habitat has an interested buyer and would like the city to transfer the lot to them. We are using this process rather than an open bidding process because it does have community development block grant funds in it, which requires restrictions on how long the affordability period has to stay and who the property can be sold to.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion for, so that we can discuss?
Any question?
Oh, Mary, go ahead.
So you had said that, that Habitat for Humanity has a buyer. Can you expand on that? What does that mean?
Sure. They have someone that's interested once the house is built. So the way that Habitat works is typically the person, once they're approved and meet the initial Habitat guidelines, then they will sign a contract for a specific lot. They haven't signed this yet, but they do market our, the city's vacant lots, both Champaign and Urbana, or wherever the person would like to live. So the value of that to us is they've got someone and they'll be building within a year or two.
Thank you.
Yes, and Dennis?
And to follow through with more information about that, would the buyer then be the homeowner? Or would the buyer be somebody who would be a landlord who would rent the property?
No, it has to be a home buyer.
That's what I was remembering, but I just want to make sure.
Right. Nope, it has to be a home buyer.
Any more questions for a motion?
I could do that.
Yes, Jared.
Go ahead, Jared.
Go ahead, Jared. I'm putting you down as making a motion, Jared.
Dennis has it.
Okay, Dennis has the, okay, go ahead, Dennis.
So you were all anxious to do this for you. All right, I'd like to move ordinance 2020-02-003, an ordinance authorizing the sale of a certain real estate at 1407 West Beslan Street in Urbana, Illinois, to Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County, forward to the city council with approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Discussion, Jared?
How many of these did we do last year, Sheila?
Gosh, I don't.
Do you recall?
I don't know, because I've been here just a year. I think that in that particular, in this particular block, this will be the fifth new Habitat home.
So there've been quite a few right around there.
Yeah. In that neighborhood, over 25% of the homes are new construction Habitat homes. There's, it's made quite an impact.
And we have over 52 or 53 Habitat homes total in the city.
Right. Of the 106 that Habitat's built.
Gotcha. Cool, thanks.
Sheila? And these are all people who are moving in to buy?
Yes, yes. They are not available for renters. And there's strict affordability guidelines that we have to follow and will, will stay on top of.
Okay.
They actually sign a land use agreement stating that they will have it as their primary residence and live there for 10 years.
Okay.
I mean, the goal of this is neighborhood stability, and so that helps ensure that.
Yeah. Any more questions? Okay, so shall we take a vote? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number 202002004, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, chapter three, section 343, increasing number of R1 liquor licenses for Sotera Indian Cuisine, Inc., DBA Sotera Indian Cuisine, 114 South Race Street, Urbana, Illinois. Indian Cuisine, 114 South Race Street, Urbana, Illinois. And mayor?
Speaking of alcohol, this is an application for a liquor license. It's for an R1 license, which is the ability to sell by the drink for on-premises consumption only. And we welcome, Sotara has been reopened after the fire from a couple of years ago, and we're certainly glad to welcome them back to downtown, and I recommend approving this license.
Yes, Bill?
Yeah, I'll move to send Ordinance Number 202002004 to City Council with recommendation for approval.
I'll happily second that.
Discussion. Yes, Dennis?
Yeah, well, it's in the downtown area. Sotara's a great restaurant. It's encouraging to see that they're back up in business. We're happy to have that occur. We've missed them for a couple of years due to the fire at the premises. So, yeah, I encourage success and hope that this works for them very well.
Jared?
And also, kudos to Jonah Weiscop for taking possession of the building after the fire with the strict intention of getting Sotara back up and running and bringing that wonderful restaurant back to downtown Urbana.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so, let's take a vote. All approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. Next, Ordinance Number 202002005, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Liquor. And we have the mayor, Marlin, Diane Marlin, and Kate Levy to give us information regarding this. And then we'll have the input from you guys. Oh, and our attorney.
This moment has been a long time coming. We're here to talk about the proposed revision to Chapter 3 of our city code, which is basically an entire rewrite of our liquor code. So, tonight, just to set the stage, we are going to be discussing the proposed text of the amendment, the policy and the framework for the liquor code, and then after that is settled and approved, we'll bring back the schedule of fees. So, we will not be discussing fees tonight, those have not yet been established. I'll be doing an introduction and overview, and then I'll turn it over to Kate for a discussion of the details of the proposed code. First of all, I wanted to let you know that the mayor's office in the city of Urbana, as well as in the city of Champaign, serves as the, the mayor serves as the local liquor control commissioner. That's one of the two hats I wear, and I have to say, it's a hat that I hadn't really tried on before I took office, and, but that's one of the hats we wear. The deputy local liquor control commissioner is my assistant, Kate Levy. Legal review for the liquor code has been in the hands of City Attorney Jim Simon, and then the content review, editing, cross-checking, and basically reading it to make sure it makes sense. We have Carol Mitten, we thank her for doing that, that was also a big job. Purpose of the liquor, of the City of Urbana Local Liquor Control Ordinance, or it's Chapter 3 of our city code, is to provide for the safety and well-being of the general public, and it's under the framework of the State of Illinois Liquor Control Act of 1934. And this is an important point to keep in mind, as much of what we do is related directly to what we have to do under state law. We do have some flexibility and leeway at the local level, but the State Liquor Control Act controls much of what we do here at the local level, and we're charged with enforcing and implementing the state law. So, in your packet tonight and available to the public is the cover memo, which gives a general summary of the major changes in the Chapter 3, actual copy of the text, which is about a 40-page packet, and then at the end of the text is a chart summarizing the new classifications and the proposed riders. I would encourage people, though, that the details are in the text and don't depend on the chart. Current liquor licenses in the city of Urbana, the classifications are based on business activity, the types of businesses, whether it's a restaurant or a bar, a hotel, motel, that sort of thing. The City Council approves each new license. Some cities have a cap on the number of licenses in each category. We approach it a different way every time. Essentially, we raise the cap by one each time you approve a liquor license. Every license comes before City Council to approve. That allows you to take into consideration each individual liquor license. And again, we're always reminded, a liquor license is a privilege, not a right, and as such, we have a responsibility to the public to consider each one. Currently, in the city of Urbana, we now have, next week, it'll be official with the one you approve tonight, we will have 78 liquor licenses, and one is currently in review. So, goal of the rewrite, why are we doing this? First of all, first and foremost, it's based on our experience over the past two and a half years with the current code. We have found, we've been responding to a lot of questions, comments, suggestions. We've getting increasing number of people coming to the office saying, "I want to do X. How do I do this within the framework of the existing code?" And it's, in some cases, it's very difficult. Our code in place now has been there for, I'm not even sure when it was last, when it was written, it certainly has been revised over the years, but it's been remodeled in a way you kind of add on and bits and pieces and amend it here and there, and it really is not flexible or adaptable enough to meet the needs of the way people are doing business today and putting on events today. So, we also have discovered over the past couple of years, there have been a number of actual mistakes in the types of licenses issued. We had, we've discovered, for example, some packaged liquor stores were actually issued licenses to pour or serve alcohol. That's a mistake. So, there's a few licenses that need to be corrected in that way. We also wanted to make it easier for the public to understand our city code and frankly to make it more efficient and easier for us to implement it. And the goal, you know, looking ahead, we hope to get the liquor license application process, the application and the renewal process online through the MUNIS system. There's a module for licenses that we will be implementing probably in, not this year, but in the next year, so that, this is gearing toward that as well. Our goal is to encourage and support businesses, entrepreneurs, and the arts in Urbana, and that's another reason we wanted to just do a complete rewrite of our liquor code. It's just, it was just impossible to use, and so at some point, out of frustration and just recognition that it was time for a change, we undertook a complete rebuilding of our city code. I wanted to give you, you don't often get a look behind the scenes, and I'm going to take this opportunity. This is very small type, it's not normally what we would do for a PowerPoint, but I just wanted to give you an idea of the amount of effort that goes on behind the scenes and how many people actually have a role in administering the liquor code in the city of Urbana. We have, just for, if a business of a person wants to come in with a new business proposition or wants to get a license for a new, a new license for a business, there's an application, there's a processing fee, they have to fill out a manager form to provide contact information, they have to demonstrate they own the property or they have possession of the premise, normally that's a lease, they have to provide the certificate of insurance showing the dram shop liability insurance coverage, and a lot of this is state, required by state law. They have to provide us with a copy of the Illinois Business Authorization Certificate of Registration, Articles in incorporation, if they're incorporated. They have to provide copies of all Basset certificates, these are the beverage, alcohol, sales, and server education training certificates, showing that their employees have been trained and per state law. If they serve food, they have to provide a copy of the Public Health District permit. There's a state FBI background check, and if they're doing video gaming, there's a copy of the Illinois Gaming Board license. So, a person in our office, that would be Kate, is checking to make sure all these forms are collected, and this is just the beginning of the application process. And we continue on. We, during this whole process, we answer questions, we review the papers, we collect, we route the documents, and then we have to verify them for being complete. Often, these will come in, especially if it's a new business, these things, some of these things will be incomplete, so we have to go back and get those complete. The Engineering Division gets involved for verifying the address and the location of the business. The Police Department does what's called a moral character review. This is state language, but that's partly the background and that sort of thing. Fire Department sets occupancy limits, they do inspections, they issue the fire permit. Community Development Services is involved in code inspections and certificate of occupancy for the premises. Legal Department reviews all the documents that were submitted. My office schedules and prepares an ordinance for City Council. By the time it arrives to you, which is what you saw in front of you tonight, all this has taken place. Once the City Council approves the license, the Finance Department then collects the fee. If it's a gaming terminal is involved, they are involved in that licensing, issuing those permits, and once all the fees are paid, then the individual is issued a license. For the day-to-day administration of the liquor, and that's just for a new application. So, for the day-to-day administration, anytime a manager or owner, anytime there's a change in ownership or management of a business, that has to be reflected in the records that we keep. If the change in the license classification, often businesses change their business model, sometimes more than once a year, and each time they do that, all that paperwork has to be changed to reflect that. We maintain, of course, a database and a file of each business. There's frequent departmental intercommunication. We often can call the State Liquor Commission if we have questions or just don't know how to answer a question. A lot of times, people come in with questions we don't know how to answer, and we can turn to the resources at the state level. We sometimes are in communication with Public Health, they're often in communication with us, especially if they're notifying us that they're shutting down a business, and that's...
Same with the State Liquor Commission.
Same with the State Liquor Commission as well. Any violations are directed to legal. Another whole category of activity is issuing our temporary licenses and permits. This is something we're seeing more and more often, which is great because we're having more downtown events, but every time there's a special event downtown, like the Downtown Get Down, the frequent concerts we have in parking lots, the movie, you know, people are coming up with some really wonderful new events that get people together in the city, and each, but each one of those, if they involve alcohol, come through the, our office, and they need a temporary license. And those get routed through a number of different departments. We often get requests for reprints of license, and we get lots of questions, and Kate answers virtually all of them, or turns to the people who do. So, that also is done in our office. And then annually, we do renewals of liquor license. Each license is issued for one year at a time. So, every year around liquor license renewal time, we verify their, for some of the classifications, like restaurant holders, we need to verify the percent of alcohol sales versus total sales. We mail out license renewals by the end of May. Any changes that are, need to be made in their information are done. We ask that they get back by mid-June. We have to review all the documents that are submitted, make any changes required, and then the licenses are, oh, and then we collect the fee, and then the licenses are renewed. What takes extra time, of course, is that sometimes there are late renewals. We had 19 late renewals this year, we had 15 with incomplete paperwork, and we have 31 licensees who are taking advantage of the city's, of the opportunity to pay six months at a time. The liquor license fee is the only fee the city of Urbana allows to be paid on an installment basis or a biannual basis. So, but that means we're dealing with two checks instead of one each year, and two payments and two processing of that. I'm not sure when that practice started, but it has, but that is in place at this point. And then video gaming was added a few years ago, which adds a whole other layer of administration, and I won't go into too much depth in that, except under the state law, it's the reverse of what we do for a regular liquor license. For video gaming, they first have to have a city liquor license, then they submit that to the Illinois Gaming Board, who issues their gaming license, and then they come back to the city to get the city gaming license, and the terminal fee is paid, and then we issue the stickers and that sort of thing. So, the video gaming added, in the last few years, another, another layer of work. So, what, where are we with the rewrite of the liquor code? This began in April of last year, so we've been at it for about 10 months now. We're on version 20...
Two.
Twenty-two.
At least.
We'll get, we'll, we'll have a couple of more, I'm sure, before we're on, but the end is in sight. And again, it was, the three of us that you see sitting up here largely are responsible for redrafting the entire new chapter. In October, we had a pretty good draft finished, and we held two public meetings with, all license holders were invited to attend, it was open to the public. We had 14 people come to two different meetings over a two-day period and got very good feedback and incorporated a lot of their comments and suggestions. And I will go back to one thing, much of the text, the changes in the text, new things that were added to this revision were the result, direct result of people coming to us and saying, "Hey, we need, we want to do this." You know, it was in response to requests and comments from our business community. From November to January was staff review and revision, and we incorporated feedback from them, and we're currently now bringing this to you. And again, this is the first time that this chapter has been discussed at a City Council meeting. This is a committee of the whole meeting, and as I said, I expect it to stay in committee, I would think, at least for one more time, and we will welcome comments and feedback. So, version 22, oh, the other thing we're going to do, once we get this completed, is that we will be, Kate is in the process of writing a guide for licensees. So, a lot of the questions that we get all the time, it'll be, you know, an FAQ plus basically a start-to-finish guide on how to get a liquor license in the city of Urbana. We'll also be setting up a new email address called liquor@urbanaillinois.us, and we'll be able to take questions, comments, and everything related to this administration of this code at that email, which will help immensely in keeping things, tracking things, actually. So, I'm going to hand it over to Kate, and she can go over the highlights of the new Chapter 3.
Good evening. The highlights that I'm going to touch on are basically laid out in the memo that we provided to you. Because of the fact that we currently, in our code, have 27 different classifications, and we, in our new proposal, we've condensed those to 19. I've kind of broken it down in the memo to show you which we've tried to bundle and condense in categories together, just to make an easier process all around for our license holders and for our staff work as well. So, as I said, currently, we've got 27. Four are currently not in use, and those are Class D, which is a club license. Those were traditionally held by our veteran service organizations, but since they have opened to the public and are no longer private, they hold our class... our Class A license now, instead of a private club license. We had an HB and an HL for extra banquet facilities at hotel motels. These were never used in the code. They may have been at, at some point in time, but I can't find a recent record that they've been held. The MB1 is our microbrewery, and that is just the standalone production facility, microbrewery, that wouldn't do the onsite sales and the pour license. And then, our pedal bus, which we haven't put into motion yet. So...
We're still waiting.
Yeah, we're still waiting. Some of the changes that were made then, if you look at the memo, the Class A, which is currently what we do have, which is our traditional pour license, our traditional bar license, what we're proposing to change is to take away the package liquor, package sales that's attached to it currently. After reviewing all of our Class A holders, we only have, do we even have any As? We don't have a single A license that's actually reporting package liquor sales, so we didn't think it was a necessary component of the license. And, right, we've...
But, but if they do choose to sell packaged liquor from the bar, then they could get the package liquor rider.
Yep.
Yes.
Question, just real quick. So, are you talking about bars that sell beer in, like twelve, by the twelve can, the twelve pack or something like that?
So, you would, you would take it to go from the bar.
Okay. Okay.
Package goods that you traditionally buy, like at a grocery store or a liquor store. You buy it to take home for home consumption, off-premise consumption.
Okay.
All, we have any number of pour licenses, a regular bar license, that include the package sales. And, we have some package licenses now that have pour licenses. So, we have a few grocery stores in town that somehow have a license to sell packaged liquor, and you could actually have a drink in there if you'd like.
That was one of the mistakes.
I was going to say, is that due to video gaming in the back room or something?
No.
They were issued an error.
Okay. And so, and I, I guess my question is, that, that this basic class, Class A license must be really old, back in the day before liquor stores, or something? Why would anybody buy liquor at a bar to take home when it's cheaper to buy it at the liquor store?
Convenience.
Convenience. It's, it's convenience. And, and right, we, until we looked further into it, we, because we knew that our Class A establishments had that listed in their license, but until we looked into their package liquor tax, that they're supposed to be reporting to the city, not a single license holder was reporting it. So, we're assuming then that there are no package liquor sales.
Exactly, okay.
But if there are, there'll, there is a package liquor rider that they'll be able to get.
Okay.
For that service to the customers.
I was just trying to understand the logic of that in the first place. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's good. So, the temporary licenses, we've had four, five different types of temporary liquor licenses, based on anything from whether you were a not-for-profit organization, or whether you were doing a wine tasting event, whether you were a current license holder. And we decided to just clean that up and make it a simpler process. Now, you either are a current license holder or a non-license holder, and that's how you will apply for your temporary license. The hotel motel licenses, there were any number of those. Also, in our current code, I count four. This proposed class will eliminate those four and make it, make it fall under the one category. This will not include a restaurant on the premise. However, there's a rider available, if they want to provide extra services. This is, this is for our establishment, our hotels that do the, the happy hour in the lobby, or they have a bar already at the establishment. So, an additional restaurant, if it's under their ownership, they'd get the rider. If a different entity owns the restaurant in the hotel, they would apply for a separate restaurant liquor license. And then, the Class R and T, Restaurant and Tavern. So, this is an expansion of our traditional restaurant licenses, and we included the tavern portion, and that is our, we've got establishments that are bars in Urbana that do a healthy, robust food service, and we want to offer them some opportunity to be in the same category as our restaurant holders. It's broken down in the code, it's broken down a little bit more in the memo, as far as how the classification will be delineated according to what your liquor sales are versus your total food and liquor sales at the establishment. And then, what's new is the BYOB-R. That's for restaurants that don't have a liquor license, but they want to allow their patrons to bring limited amounts of alcohol on the premise. The Class CS, Complimentary Service, that's for an establishment who doesn't hold a traditional liquor license, that want to offer drinks to their customers, and...
We, we got requests for that around Valentine's Day, from some of the boutiques downtown, who wanted to offer a glass of wine while people were shopping around the holidays as well, for salons, for the spas, the nail salons, Long's Garage. But, you know, it's, it's so limited amounts, complimentary service, as part of...
Not for sale.
Not for sale.
Mm-hmm.
In limited quantities, yes.
The Class F, Farmer's Market, that was a request from some of our vendors at our market at the square, to have, to do the package liquor sales at the market, and to also offer tastings then of, of that beer and wine.
And Kate, could you, do you think you could call it an FM for Farmer's Market? F sounds like it failed. And everything else has got a double, double, double letter. I think FM would be nice.
Okay. I'll ask the boss.
Class C.
We're taking notes. We're taking notes.
And then, our Class TH, Theater License, we don't have anything like that currently, and we thought we'd just offer it out there, to see if, if somebody wanted to bite and take us up on it.
So, this is, Station Theater could qualify today, and a future movie theater, as well. Going back, just a note on the R and T. We also heard from a couple of restaurant owners who, who said, you know, I offer alcohol for sale just as a service to the customers, but it's way less than ten percent of my total sales. Most of my revenue is, is from food, and, you know, paying for a full-priced liquor license is, it's just really expensive. And so, they were thinking of just, you know, maybe weighing the pros and cons of even having a liquor license. So, we just, we did some investigation. There's probably seven or eight restaurants who might qualify, so we decided to offer a twenty-five percent discount on the liquor license fee if their liquor sales are ten percent or less of the total sales. The people we talked to, it's actually, it was more closer to three or four percent. So, so we thought that would be a way to, you know, keep the service that the customers wanted, but to give people a, a bit of a break in the price.
Is it appropriate to ask, to ask a question relevant to that? Is it statutorily permissible and administratively feasible, in lieu of a fixed fee for a liquor license, to have a fraction of drink costs passed through? Basically, a liquor tax? The reason, that, that idea came to my mind, because you're talking about people who have such low liquor sales, that maybe the, the liquor license fee is, is, is not reasonable, but it, it might make sense for, logically, to my nerd-like mind, it might make sense for the, the cost to be directly proportional to how much liquor is, is sold.
I think that would be very difficult to administer, but, but it's a good thought. I mean, we could, we could look into it, but I think it would be very difficult, and it would change from one...
Yeah, we're just...
...time to the next.
From one week to the next, possibly, just, you know.
We do get reports quarterly, when we need month, actually, monthly, so. Okay, well, we'll put it down.
Jared?
Erica, a better way to think about implementing something like that, rather than on the forefront, is offer a rebate when they renew, or something along those lines? Because there's no way anybody's going to be able to predict their sales through a year, so you wouldn't know what to charge them upfront initially. But if they report at the end, and you offer a rebate or something along those lines, then it might be easier to figure out, because you could say, oh, well, we only did a thousand dollars in liquor sales all year. Well, we're going to take, you know, ten percent of that, or something along those lines.
Well, one of, yeah, I mean, one of the, we'll, we'll talk about more when we talk about fees, but one of the goals also is to, several of the liquor license fees, just over the years, got kind of out of whack compared to the rest of them. So, we're, when we look at the overall fee schedule, we'll be looking at getting the fees back to where they, I think, are reasonable level.
One other issue we would have to consider in such a proposal is the distinction between fees and tax. Of course, we currently tax food and beverage, which includes alcohol, and we recently increased the food and beverage tax for packaged goods, i.e. liquor sold in original package form with their seals intact. What you're, you would be suggesting would be more of a tax than a fee. The difference between a tax and a fee is, the fee is supposed to approximate the cost of, in this case, making the licenses available, and all the processing, and question answering, and all the other activities, administrative activities that go along with processing, managing, handling, answering questions related to liquor licenses. The percentage you're suggesting, or the basis you're suggesting, would bear no relationship to that cost of processing. So, it would be viewed as a tax, and we'd have to be careful about that.
Okay, Kate?
Hi. I, I wanted to mention, probably about seven minutes ago, but I still want to mention it, that as, I came, I came over here a year and a half ago. I came to work for the mayor, and this became a very large part of my job, and I took copious notes, I studied, studied this code, because I didn't, I didn't know anything about what I was doing. I studied Champagne's code. And then, we worked on the new code, the proposed code that, that we're giving you tonight. But I want to say that through this process, as I've been learning, the folks, the license holders, the folks that have been interested in applying for temporary licenses, people who are just interested in how the process worked, every instance that they had something that didn't quite fit in our code, I made a note of it. And when we finally sat down ten months ago, I brought that whole stack with, and we, I think we pretty much found a way to fit all of those asks in this new code.
And also tried to anticipate, which is hard to do, but, you know, going forward, which is why we used the framework we did. Going for, in the past, when people brought a new idea or a different type of business, we just made up a new, not we, but in the past, a different category. A new liquor license classification was made up, so that's how we got up to twenty-seven different liquor licenses. And then, they were divided into subcategories, and, and it's just got to be too unwieldy. So, we've got a framework now with the basic liquor license classifications, and most of the new things ought to be able to be done through a rider. There will be some new types of businesses. We heard about one today, which we could figure out how to, to do that, but, but hopefully we can, we have a code that's more flexible. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Well, it's okay.
Somebody raised a question about the current code and when it was adopted. The curtain, current code also was an overhaul of the city's liquor ordinance, and that took place, it was adopted in May nineteen ninety-five, and it was ordinance ninety-four, ninety-five dash one oh-two. So, this is the first overhaul, or this is the first overhaul since May nineteen ninety-five.
Every twenty-five years, whether we need it or not.
I wasn't even born then.
Okay, so, we're going to talk about some riders, and what we did was mimic City of Champagne, because their licensing is set up that way, where they've got a, a license category, and then a kind of a, create your own licensing scheme with these riders. In the chart that we attached, you'll see some are eligible for certain licenses, some are not eligible. We took some licenses that are in our current code and made them into riders, such as a catering rider. So typically, someone like Hickory River would have their, their Class B or BB license, and then they'd also have to get a CA one or CA two catering license. Now, they'll just get their restaurant license, and then the rider, which allows them to cater, and then do their alcohol sales off, off-premise. The outdoor cafe, that's basically our sidewalk cafe permit license, that, that'll just be a rider. The package liquor, we mentioned that earlier. The package liquor will stay as a full license as well, and those will be available for our grocery stores, for our liquor stores, those traditional packaged goods stores. The package liquor rider will be for our, some of our establishments, some of our bar-type establishments, for them to be able to offer those package liquor sales as well. And then, the video gaming, which was traditionally a license, that, that will be a rider. And the new ones that we came up with, the all-ages live entertainment event, we can disregard the, the ages in there for the time being, that's, I think, still under discussion. But, the reason that came about, we had a specific request from an entity that wanted to be able to provide shows for, for younger teenagers in the area, and we found the Champagne already had a ready-made rider in place, so we borrowed heavily from that. And, the hotel restaurant, that is for, I mentioned earlier, with the hotel license, if they chose, chose to have a restaurant in the facility and offer liquor service there, they'd get the rider. And then, the pickup and delivery, that's for our package liquor stores, which we, do we already have that in place with, with package liquor store, with the Class C licenses?
Not as a rider.
Not as a rider. It's just written into the license, but this will also be available to both the package liquor, and then, I believe, our microbreweries.
I believe so.
Just a couple additional things, and we've mentioned this earlier, we, this information that we, that we collect, that the city's finance department collects, it informs... it informs our classifications to, you know, to make sure that we're assigning in the correct way, that we're being fair to all the parties. And so this goes with our food and beverage tax information. That informs our restaurant licenses. The package sales tax information, these are, you know, monthly reports that currently have to be submitted. We're just continuing that. And, and we are in discussion because we have not established our fee schedule yet. But for the Class A, if, if an establishment, because we do have some that don't do a full liquor service, they just do beer or beer and wine or wine only, that there would be some kind of discounted rate for that particular license. And then the same for the restaurant and tavern that was mentioned earlier, if they have very minimal liquor sales.
Sure. So again, just to wrap up, next steps is, once we've completed discussion at the council level, would be to adopt the revised codes. Then we would bring a proposed schedule of fees. And we're going to, this time, currently, the liquor license fees are part of the overall fee schedule. We're going to separate the two, bring the rest of the fee schedule to you separately, and then bring the liquor license fees, depending on the timing of when we get these all done. But you'll see, you'll see the proposed fees. Once those are all approved, then we're going to need to update all the forms that we use, make new forms. We'll be updating our website. The license application guidebook will be written and released. And then we'll get the renewal process underway. And that, this year, that's going to take, that'll take extra time just to educate people as far as which classification they belong to, which riders they're, you know, they're eligible for, make sure everyone's assigned to the correct category, and that sort of thing. But once, once we get through that, I really think the whole process is going to be much simpler and easier. And we will be positioned then next year to go to, hopefully, to online service, which would make life easier for everybody.
Jared?
Just because I know that we're going to get into a full discussion with everyone, I would suggest that we take our public comment now prior to talking with everyone.
I didn't know if they were done, so that's why I was waiting. Thora, are you guys done?
We're done.
Okey-dokey. So our public input, Patrick Singer, would you like to come and state your case?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First off, I forgive you. It's not the first time, it's not the last time. So I won't, I won't hold that against you. I think my feelings have changed since I got here and now that I'm sitting here. So my name's Patrick Singer. I'm a promoter in town. I help produce Pygmalion Festival, as well as do independent club shows throughout the year at various venues, many of which are predominantly in Urbana these days. Rose Bowl, Canopy Club, Blackbird, Iron Post, Independent Media Center, et cetera. So I, first of all, want to thank everyone for taking the time to talk about this important topic. And Mayor Marlin, before we got in, she knew, I think, we were coming in hot because we had some questions about this one particular item, about the 18-plus rule about patrons being in bars past 9:00 p.m. So I do want to say that I appreciate how much diligence is being brought to the subject. Because I think, though I don't own a bar, never, never owned a bar, I'm not a business owner in this particular way. I'm just a promoter in town trying to put on events and do them in cool spaces and produce cool things for people to experience art and culture and music. So I think it's a really important topic based on those things. And I've dealt with having to work around these particular rules and these particular age discrepancies within the structure of different venues as a promoter. So I think it's a really interesting topic. And I'm glad that all these revisions are being made. And because I think it's a, you know, obviously, a monster job to revise an entire liquor code. But I think from the perspective of a promoter that's independent, putting on events, a lot of the events that I happen to put on appeal very much to people that are between the ages of 14 and 21. So I think that, you know, seeing as how we have all these students here, it's a big thing for me and the business that I'm involved in outside of the process of looking at the bars, and specifically, the bar owners and the licensees, or the people that have the licenses. I think that'd be a licensee, something like that. But yeah, so I thought, I thought I was going to come here tonight and talk more about, oh, we can't raise the age, you know, this is why, blah, blah, blah. So I think as I've been listening to the presentation, I appreciate how much diligence is going into this revision. And I just wanted to emphasize how important these things are when it comes to people that are putting on events, as an event producer myself. And I look forward to seeing this new rider go into effect in Urbana. Because I feel like Urbana is doing an excellent job at, you know, harboring this sort of creative venue and creative space, whereas it's in an age, in a community where these spaces are becoming less and less available to do particular types of shows, especially ones that I'm doing with, you know, nationally touring artists, and they expect a particular type of room and a particular type of operation. And oftentimes, you know, because we don't have a ton of all-ages spaces, bars or venues that have bars in them that have these particular rules are what we have to work with. So I think, you know, given that Urbana has already have an 18-plus for entry for shows normally, I think that making these, keeping that at the same age, but offering this additional sort of rider is a, is a positive thing. So I'm glad to hear that they're still being worked on on the, on the liquor code. And that was just my two cents, that's all I had. But thanks for your attention to it. And if you have any questions about what it means to do this with an independent promoter, I'm happy to speak to anyone. But yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. I do have another public input card. I think the gentleman has left, Mike Ingram. Well, it's regarding the liquor license changes, specifically 19-plus. Choose not to address the members. He's in opposition of the, of the age, opposing the raising of bar entry age. I understand it won't be pursued, but I still want to state how detrimental it would be to specifically artists and musicians, but also to the college experience. Yeah. And Vanessa, Vanessa Robinson, would you please approach?
Hi there.
Been watching too much Law &amp; Order, sorry.
I watch it all the time. So I want to start out with commending you guys for working on all these classifications for liquor license. Because I spent the last couple of days reading through your proposal, your 39-page proposal, multiple times, and it's very impressive. It's a lot of work, so, great job there. And I think I may have been one of the people in the last couple of years that was poking your office and hoping for an all-ages rider for entertainments. And while I'll echo-
We were going to call it the Canopy Club Rider, just so you know.
Fantastic. So yeah, so I am vice president of J. Goldberg Events, and I run the Canopy Club here in Urbana, which has been around for 20 years, entertaining those 18 and up. And as a former U of I college student, I can say that I will echo Patrick's words. I think it's very important for freshmen to be able to come in and get to see a concert. Because it's not about the bar, it's about the show that they're getting to experience. So I will echo, and I know this has already been discussed, but I will echo that I think the 18 and up age rider is really important to us. But at the same time, I really want to express that I am in full support of the all-ages rider. We, while we put on a lot of concerts, comedy, poetry, all sorts of things, I, as someone who was an advocate for Catholic charities, a youth advocate, I worked at the police stations, I've worked in youth work for many years, I think it's really important to offer teenagers another outlet and to give them another enriching experience in their life. And I think live music, poetry, comedy, all of that is part of that experience for them. So we would love to be able to offer that as, to the community and to the teenagers here. And I just really wanted to express that that's important to the Canopy Club.
Jacob, I mean Eric.
Yeah, so I'd like to ask a question of you, which would actually pertain to everybody who's operating establishments like this. You don't feel that it's an issue to be able to admit people who are too young to actually consume alcohol, that that's, you can, you can work that out?
Sure, well, currently, we are 18 and up. Because we do have the current Class A rider. And so we, you know, ID every person that comes through the venue, and they will get a wristband based on their age, you know, underage or overages, basically. So we manage that pretty well. We, I don't think we've had any problems with the city in a long time now. We have a great security team. I work very closely with the police department here, too. So we haven't had any problems, at least for 18 and up. And I don't foresee that being an issue for all ages. And I know that part of the amendment includes a time limit, you know, to 9:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m. And I have, I think that's, you know, fair, especially considering, I'm sure there's curfew laws in place here. And so I don't think that that would be an issue for us. We often get calls from parents asking how they can bring their children to shows. And because right now, it's legal guardian only, you know, a parent can bring their son, but they can't bring their niece. And so that's, that's a common problem for us.
Okay. I, I thought your answer would be pretty much what you said, but I wanted to get it into the public record.
Absolutely.
Yes, Mayor Marlin?
While you're here, what, what, can you repeat what you think is a reasonable close, time that a 14 to 17-year-old should be out of the entertainment venue?
In my opinion?
Yeah, in your opinion, I'm trying, we're trying to-
Sure, I, I think, well, I don't know what the curfew laws are, but I think for us, it would be 10:00 p.m. would be a comfortable time to be switching over to, you know, your legal adult crowd, I suppose. You know, so if we were to able, be able to offer concerts to teenagers that can end, you know, let's say they end at 9:45, we clear the room by 10:00.
So these would be the, the entertainment gear, especially for this age group?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Jared?
Diane and I were discussing this earlier, and I had suggested an hour later. Currently, the way the code is written is that it's a 10 o'clock show end and an hour to get them out, basically. So you'd have until 11:00. I'd suggested changing the all, the all-ages portion of that to show end at 11:00, out by midnight because of conflicts with artists, getting people there on time, breakdowns, you know, all those extraordinary factors that can cause a show to start later.
Sure, I won't argue with that.
That's why she's, that's why we're, we were discussing it earlier, if 10:00 was appropriate, or if we should move it an hour later or something like that. And also, I think it's important that we always need to remind everyone that these are minimum standards. And that should you choose to enact your own specific, more stringent standards, you can certainly do so. But we're trying to figure out where the right minimum bar is.
I'd like to say something. What is, what is the current, because I noticed that you were using this, too. What is the current curfew for a child between 14 and 18? Or 19 or? Jim? Okey-dokey.
There are two sections that deal with curfew. Section of the code 15-63 allows the mayor to declare curfews of all kinds, including for minors. But section 15-63, it's for people under 17, 16-years-old or under. On Saturday, it's from 12:01 Saturday morning to 6:00 a.m. Saturday. They're not, people under the age of 17 are not allowed on the streets. Sunday, it's again 12:01 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., can't be on the streets. And then Sunday through Thursday, it's 11:00 p.m. And then six, up to 6:00 a.m. the following day.
So these are the 16 through 18, or 20-year-olds?
16 and under.
16 and under. So the curfew is basically midnight? Is that what you're saying?
Monday through Thursday is 11:00.
There is no curfew for 17 and 18, to my knowledge. I'd have to look further into the code. While we were talking, while you raised curfew, I started looking to see what's in the curfew. Because I've never had to deal with a curfew issue in Urbana. So we obviously don't have a problem.
I'm just trying to remember my citizens' police training thing. Because I know that there's a, there is a curfew within Champagne-Urbana limits. I, I, for some reason, I thought that at a particular age, like if you're 14, it's like 10:30 or something.
According to this, it's broken out, as I say, 16 and under.
Okey-dokey. So 16 and under, they can stay out till midnight? Party luck is 1999?
They can stay out basically till, till 12:01.
Okay. Yeah, basically midnight.
Midnight, yes.
Yeah. Hopefully, you're falling into the house by 12:01.
Which would fall under what I was suggesting, sure as of-
But I just wanted to be clear, because it's, it's all well and good for us to say, oh, curfew at 12:00, but, you know, you kind, kind of want to know what, if there's that kind of policy and what, what it might be.
It's codified in our ordinance.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? That was just my question about, Mary Ellen? Really? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I think I've addressed all of my points. I suppose if there is more consideration in changing the, the age limits to match champagne, I would want to address that I think it's really important for, especially the community incoming freshmen, we're a big university town, obviously, and be able to see some live entertainment. And I'm coming, like Patrick said, from the promoter point of view, not concerned about the bars here. So it's very important to us.
Okay.
And I think that's all I've got.
Well, thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thanks.
Okay. Is that it?
That's the public input.
Having nothing else on the agenda, I-
No, no.
No, oh, 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 discussion, my bad. Discussion, sorry. Now, Mary Ellen?
I'm going to make a motion just so that we can get the discussion going.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'd like to move that ordinance number 202002005, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 3, alcoholic liquor, be kept in committee.
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
So-
Jared?
Do you want to go, Mary Ellen?
No, no, no.
Okay. I was just going to go over a couple of things that I've been talking to Kate and the mayor and Jim about, one of which was the age thing and holding at 18 rather than moving the Class A minimum to 19, which we've all kind of got on the same page about. In the rider, I think, and I also want to express this to some of the people who asked me about the all-ages rider. We had discussed moving the show end to 11:00 o'clock to accommodate later events. It's up for, up for debate, obviously. I just have, I've done a lot and been in a lot of all-ages promotions and seen them. And 10 o'clock's just, it seems late, but it's really not that late for going out to a show. So I suggested 11:00 with the caveat that then everyone would have to be out of the venue by midnight. So we talked, we discussed that. As far as people who are applying for them are concerned, I think there is an initial desire when reading it to think that a particular venue or license holder is going to have to apply for one of these riders every time they do an all-ages event. And I was informed that that is not the case. In fact, they can make a general notification that generally states that they're going to be pursuing those things every Friday and Saturday night, once or twice a month. Here are some specific dates. And they can give notification according to the guidelines in there at any time to serve as notification for a mass amount of events or a few events at a time. It's not going to be individually based, so they're not going to have to do it every single time you want to throw an all-ages event. And I think that's important for business owners to know because that would be an onerous process. onerous process, and I would be, I would be adamantly against, happy to do that every time somebody was going to have an event. So rest assured, promoters and business owners, that giving a general notification, Diane can speak a little bit more to this.
I was going to say, we'd be, we'd be adamantly against it as well.
Yeah, because that would be lots of paperwork for them to have to process every time there's one of those shows. So I know that was raised to me by a couple of different people, so I just wanted to make that clear, that, that will be kind of a one-size-fits-all or a bulk, a bulk application to get that rider and not dependent on individual shows. Go, Diane.
Oh, and I'm just, so are you talking about that, that there is a license that is given, they take the license and let's say it's for a year, and, you know, this allows you to have up to 34 shows a year on this license, or something like that?
I think it's more, the way we were, we were talking about it is, it's not necessarily saying, okay, so Patrick isn't going to know exactly how many all ages shows he's going to throw at the Royals Bowl at a given year. So he's not going to be able to tell those owners, I've got 17 shows where I'd like to do this. But he is going to say, and the owners of the Royals Bowl would say, we are planning on hosting these shows, here's a warning of the number of dates we have coming up. Or we know that we're planning on doing a lot of these shows, so we're going to let you know that we're planning on having the access to do them every Friday and Saturday for the extent of this license. They'll have to apply for that rider again when the rider comes back up, but so long as, I mean, they have to meet the requirements that are in that rider application. You know, there's a security plan that has to be put in place, there's all those requirements that are in there. They'll still have to do that, but they'll only have to do it one time.
A year, once a year.
Once a year.
Okay.
To get that rider, and then it just kind of stays in place.
Okay.
But they can also just do it for one show. You know, if you're rarely ever doing them, and you only need to do it for one show, just to let them know, hey, this specific time we're going to do this. The city just basically needs to get notification and on those requirements for it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Diane, and I, and Jim, and Kate had discussed, and hopefully within the next time this comes back up in committee, I'm going to be proposing a license that was not offered in here for a business model that I had pursued once, but am no longer pursuing. And actually, it was in Champaign, but now I think Urbana's the, the place to do it. And there are a couple of places that could be using this. It's going to be a BYOB of sorts, and we're going to be working with legal. I've got a whole thing I've got to go through with Jim, but you guys will see that, and I'll get to talk to you about it, hopefully, at the next committee meeting. One thing that I wanted to, to bring up, that Kate and I'd like to hear more, more of your thoughts on this, we didn't, I meant to go back to when we were talking earlier, but didn't get a chance to, but the 60/40 thing in, in restaurants. And I remember, I'm pretty sure you had said that Champaign got rid of their percentage, right? Am I recalling, you telling me that?
It, it seems that that is what I spoke with, with the folks in, in Champaign today, just earlier this afternoon. I believe they, they said that when they did their revision in 2018, they got rid of that, that split.
Did, did you ask them why, or, you know, why then it was necessary to have it, or how they were differentiating it from their, like, regular Class A, their version of a Class A?
No. Actually, just to, it's trying to even, I remember the conversation, but then I think we met shortly after, and then I didn't write. I've got three codes I'm juggling in my head right now. No, but I can certainly follow up with them to find out what, what their reasoning was behind that.
Sure.
Because I think it would be good, good to know, see what we can do with that.
Sure, I think it would, I think it would be smart for us to consider either a change or an elimination, or however we can think about what they were doing with that for our restaurant owners as well, just because, as I mentioned to them earlier, a lot of people who you would think operate in that manner as a restaurant primarily are actually not operating with larger food sales. Black Dog Urbana is an example, Cornell is another example, who both hold Class A licenses because their alcohol sales actually exceed their food sales, and they're not anywhere near close getting to a 60/40, but they still generally meet the concept of the restaurant license and the restaurant holding. You know, they're, they're much more, right, the tavern, they're much more appropriate for that than they are for a Class A license, because they're not purely just a bar that doesn't sell food. So I think it would be, I meant to come back when we were talking about that earlier and bring it up again, to say we need to look into that and see if, you know, that's worth looking into as well.
Right, and I think, I think of Bunny's Tavern as well.
Yes, Bunny's, too.
Because of their food service. Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Also like a 50/50, not a 60/40, but they still would, would appreciate it. Those are all my comments for now, thanks.
Okay, Mary Ellen?
All right. So the clerk passed this to me, so that we can figure out the 11:00 PM curfew. So the curfew is 11:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday. So the 11:00 PM works only on Friday and Saturday night, if you want to change that. That's, I, I wouldn't be opposed to it personally, if we changed it to 11:00 PM for all age shows from Friday to Saturday.
I think that's, that's actually what we had talked about, was having a differentiation between Sunday, Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday, having a later curfew.
Yeah, because it's midnight.
Yep.
And, and I have to say, I mean, I grew up in this area, and so we would specifically come over to Urbana to go see shows when I was 18, because I could legally do that. So I, I think it's good to have the option for people who are, who are 18 years old, they're adults, so they should be allowed into areas where adults are allowed. But that is not my question. So I'm going to go back to the definitions. There, on the definition page, there is definition D, which is alcohol liquor, means the four varieties of liquor defined in the section are alcohol, spirits, wine and beer, and every liquid or solid, patented or not, containing alcohol, spirits, wine or beer, and capable of being consumed as a beverage by human beings. So that's our definition of alcohol liquor. When I look through the code, there is a delineation between beer, wine, and alcohol liquor. So my question to legal is, so if I look at Class RT1, Class RT2, RT1, the only difference between RT1 and RT2 is that RT1 allows for the service of alcohol liquor, and RT2 allows for the sale and service of beer and/or wine. But if we're defining alcohol liquor as including beer or wine, I'm curious why we have that delineation.
The reason for the delineation is because a licensee that sells spirits, beer, and wine, and other products infused with, quote, alcohol, which for the moment is defined, but we're thinking of deleting it, the definition of alcohol, and I'll explain that in a second, why, versus just beer and wine. That's the delineation. So an RT, a person who has an RT license may want to offer all forms of liquor. Another person that has an RT license may only want to offer beer, wine, or beer and wine.
So we're subdividing those here, even though we're counting alcohol and beer into alcohol liquor?
Well, no.
I mean, we're counting beer and wine into alcohol liquor.
Spirits, beer, and wine fall within the broad definition of alcoholic liquor. Now, you will see in the code references to alcoholic beverages. There is already another draft in process, and I haven't even distributed it to the mayor or Kate, but they know about it, and there are some changes. There is no definition for alcoholic beverages. It could be alcohol beverages, but that's not what's in the code, actually. There is one or two references to the word al, just alcohol. The reason we are going to delete all the alcoholic beverages and replace those, and in the draft, I've already done that, I guess that'd be 23, we've already done it, and so alcoholic liquor will replace alcoholic beverages. We don't need the definition of alcohol, because there are products that are infused with distillate alcohol that may not in fact be a spirit, or beer, or wine. But the Illinois Liquor Control Act of 1934 has a definition of alcohol, and some of these others, but alcohol. And the draft code, just like the current code, provides that a definition that appears in that statute that is not defined here also would apply here. So there's really no need for alcoholic, alcoholic, excuse me. Alcoholic liquor is also defined, almost the way we define it in this draft and in our current code, but I think it's important to keep that, so when somebody wants to know what alcoholic liquor means throughout the code, and I, I think there's over 100 references to that, they don't have to shift back and forth to some act that they may or may not have access to. So that, that definition is in here. This code as drafted is not dependent on the definition of alcohol, other than that it, you know, we're concerned about spirits, beer, and wine, and I'm not sure.
So just to summarize real quickly, the alcoholic liquor in restaurant, sorry, Class RT1 includes all of those different items, because that's the definition. And then in RT2, it subdivides it and says, oop, no more spirits, just beer and wine. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's what's in place today, essentially.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure that all the alcoholic references within our code weren't in alignment with my understanding.
We have a B, and a BB, and a triple B, and some of these were created because...
And they're all going away.
They're all going away, and people just didn't look at the code to say, oh, well, we can cover that with an existing license. So council created, way back when, created different licenses when existing classifications may have satisfied.
All right. So my, my next question, since we've had a lot of conversation about the all ages and the, and the riders and so forth, and it's my understanding that the, the owner of the premises is the person who is the one who applies for the liquor license, and I would assume that applies to riders as well. So just if I could have clarification on that.
The owner of the business.
The owner of the business, so if...
Not the building.
Thank you, the owner of the business. So if Crane wants to have, if Crane Alley wants to have an all ages show, which I can't envision them doing, but maybe they will, they would be the ones, not the producer who would have to hold that rider.
The license goes with the business owner.
And it's, it's valid for a year, which is what Jared was talking about.
Correct.
Right? Okay. And they're actually, they would be renewed and applied for at the same time. So they'd be issued at the same time, both the license and the rider.
But if a business decides to change its business model to do something which falls within a rider, let's say they get their license in June or July, after the review process has been completed, and six months later they change their business model, and it's covered by a rider, they could apply at that point to get a rider. They don't have to wait for the renewal of their license to get a rider.
They can do it midterm, basically.
Or anytime, anytime.
Anytime, anytime. So then, just a small little point of clarification, I think it's a little confusing to say 14 to 18, because for all ages, because it doesn't include 18-year-olds, it's up to 18-year-olds.
It's 14, it'll be 14 to 17.
Yeah, I was just going to say, for clarification, it should be 14 to 17.
And then 18, 18 will be the regular bar entry. So that doesn't change.
Okay, I'll let other people have questions.
We'll, we'll make those revisions.
Jared.
Just one other thing that we discussed that I remembered. In the code, if anyone was, was looking, the MB1 and MB2 licenses are not actually going to be separated anymore, there is just going to be one MB license in the... I thought, no?
There will still be the two MB, the MB1 will be, or did, is that?
No, no, you're right. What happened when we discussed it, and I could see where you might have been confused, because we may have not have been clear. There will remain two MB-type licenses. One for businesses that just brew their beer, however...
But don't have a taproom.
Right, they don't have a taproom, and then MB2, they have a taproom. But as it stands right now, because we have both an MB1 and an MB2, no one has an MB1, and we have two MB2s in, in the city. No one has applied for an MB1. But it's there if somebody wants to do it, and they may, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, Riggs originally had an MB1, and then shifted over to an MB2, as they expanded their business operation. No? I, I thought they, they might have at the very beginning. But in any event, that license is available for somebody who doesn't want to operate at least initially a taproom, but they want to brew beer as state law allows.
Maybe what was confusing about our discussion earlier, so there's still the two classifications for the production facility, and then the taproom and production facility. Now, built into that MB2 license is, are those additional liquor licenses for beer, wine, and spirits?
Gotcha.
Where traditionally in the past, you had to get your MB2, and then get an additional license.
Okay, I, my bad, I was, I thought we were throwing them all into one, but it should be at least known to microbrewery folks, and Riggs had a lot to do with this, and our other 25 o'clock will be really interested in this as well, is that having that microbrewing license with the taproom will allow them to operate full bars in their taproom, and they will not be restricted any longer to just serving their own beer or beer and wine. They're not going to have to get another extra license to serve wine or to serve spirits as well. I thought that was worth noting as well.
So...
Jared?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, in the document that I'm looking at, I only see one MB, but it's MB2. So I assume that MB1 ought to be there, that that's a...
Page 23.
23, there is an MB1 and an MB2.
Really?
Top of page 23 is the MB1.
In the code itself.
And a little bit down.
Looking at the chart. I, I was looking at the chart at the end, I'm sorry. Okay. At the chart at the end, it's, MB1 is left out.
Sure.
It's left off, yeah, it got left off.
Okay.
Didn't make the cut.
But it will be there, okay.
This is version 70.
It is, it is in the code.
It is in the code, and, and, and like I said, refer to the code, not the chart, until we get everything, until we get everything.
Dennis.
Is it possible, then, I'm wondering, if a, a person who has a regular license can get multiple riders for various events that occur? So that's how they can vary, vary their programming according to the needs that they feel like are coming up?
To a certain extent, you can customize your license with the riders.
They're, so they're indicated on the, on the chart, but they're also included in the code. In each of the classifications, it tells you what riders are available, and in the riders' section, what, what classifications that they can be applied to.
So there are going to be some limitations about, about what you can do depending on your base thing, so...
Sure, absolutely.
So I was wondering, then, about, say, okay, I was looking at the new, well, I didn't look at the chart, but Class TH theater license?
Theater.
And whether they would, a rider available as an outdoor cafe, could they also then get an all-age license as well as a rider?
So...
Go ahead, Jared.
Dennis, I was asking about this earlier, and what was confusing about the all ages thing is that the reason it exists as a rider for Class As is because Class As are the only license that has an age restriction built in. All other licenses do not have age restrictions.
Gotcha.
Restaurants do not have them, theaters will not have them.
Microbreweries don't have them.
Microbreweries don't have them, only Class As have them, which is why they have to apply to get that, that rider. So technically, a theater would not need a rider to have an all ages event.
Go ahead, Jim.
So that makes sense, and then I've got one more question.
Okay, go ahead, I thought he was going to clarify something for you.
Do you want to, Jim? Yes, you do.
I'm just trying to help.
That's fine.
An example of multiple riders is the Class A. As you will see, on all of these, there's a reference right under the name of the license in italics, riders available. And for instance, an all, a Class A can get an all-age live performance event rider, a catering rider, an outdoor cafe rider, a packaged goods rider, and a video gaming rider. That's not a gaming hall, that's just to have them issued. That's our original GH1 license. On a number of these, there are no riders available, because they, they just don't mesh. For instance, a BYOBR says riders available, none, because the riders... a BYOB R says riders available, none, because the riders authorize the sale of liquor, sale, service of liquor, and a BYOB restaurant doesn't sell or sell or serve its own liquor, only that which is brought onto the premises by patrons.
Okay, yeah. I think that the chart's the only thing I really didn't examine carefully, so thank you. I had one other question, too. I saw the rather interesting list of ABC and D items which deal with all age performances on page 29, which look like the list of the Blue Laws, which can't have any naughty presentations that show slinky winkies and other kinds of things. Where does this language come from?
That language, for the most part, was the product of about three meetings between the mayor, Kate, and myself. It took us a tremendous amount of time to try to figure out how to define what a possibly all ages live performance event is. Obviously, we don't want exotic dancing.
Mm-hmm.
Page 29. I was wondering if that was, did that come from your conversations here in the city, or is that a state regulation?
No, this is our conversations here among the mayor, Kate, and myself, in terms of what we don't want, the kinds of performances for all ages we don't want. There is language like this in our zoning ordinance, and I pulled some of that language out of ours, being the city's zoning ordinance, that talk about adult entertainment venues.
So, I just was wondering if this would be in any way in conflict with freedom of speech?
Yes and no. Remember, these are private, these are private entities, and the First Amendment doesn't apply to conduct. A private entity can limit speech in any...
In a private club?
In a private club. No, I mean, I don't mean a public entity, I'm talking about the difference between a privately owned business versus a government. A privately owned business has the right to limit this. This is a privilege, and this is the quid pro quo. If they want to have some other kind of an establishment, and I believe there's one here in the city, then they would apply for a different kind of license. Now, they could have an all ages performance rider, but the events would have to be age appropriate for the events that they want to host.
So, I just think that the community should know that we are establishing what we consider as age appropriate.
Yes.
You betcha.
Okay, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Anybody else? Yeah, Eric?
I'll just make a general comment, that I'm really pleased that you're making these regulations more flexible, I think more transparent. You know, the flexibility is, gives rise to transparency. I have to tell an anecdote. My son, when he was in high school, won on the radio two tickets to admit to Maples for Black Flag, but he couldn't get in because he was too young. And so, because they didn't have at all age rider, so...
And they still don't in Campus Town.
And they still don't in Campus Town, and it's too bad, but I'm glad that we're going to have.
I do have, go ahead, Kate.
Right, as a matter of fact, Class A establishments in the city of Champaign that are within the Campus Town district are not allowed to have all ages entertainment. And they also are limited to, all the, the Class As are limited to 19-plus also in Champaign.
Well, good for us.
I did have one question before I call on you, Jared, because you're talking about the customizing, the kind of Build-A-Bear kind of customizing.
Within the framework, within the framework.
Okay, so, do you, you know, so my question is, how do you start off with, like, one particular license that you pay for, and then you add riders, or you don't add riders, and it just...
Yeah, you need the license. If you're going to sell or serve alcohol in the city of Urbana, you need the license first, and then you can, if you need a rider or you want a rider, you can, you can see if that...
But you can't, you can't build a license from riders alone. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Wow, interesting question, but no, I don't think so.
Okay, Jim, you can already say something?
I was going to jump in, but Diane answered the question. You just can't apply for a rider alone, or a couple of riders with no class of license.
A rider attaches to something, so it has to...
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not some kind of Tetris thing, where, you know, you can just kind of...
We're trying to simplify, not complicate.
Okay.
At all levels.
Jared?
I just wanted to mention two other things. One was my, sorry, just trying to let people know what's going on. My admiration and appreciation for the condensing of all the temporary licenses that were there before into now a temp C and temp N license. The temp N license will be the general, what I'm dubbing pop-up license, for pop-up events, things that are happening on a one-off temporary kind of basis. There is a clear and easy-to-follow guide to apply for one and to use one, and I encourage people to look at that who are interested in those or who have done those in the past. And, the other thing that I was going, that I had asked the mayor about was the, now I forgot what it was, the Torah thing.
Temporary outdoor...
Talk about that a little bit.
Temporary outdoor refreshment area, which we actually created last year, and that was for the Downtown Get Down specifically, but it can be used in other instances. It's for, well, designating an area. Typically, it would be downtown where people can go carry alcohol in the appropriate container from one establishment to the next, as long as it's within that area, for a limited period of time. So, it would be under a special event. So, you'll see that with the Sweet Corn Festival, you'll see it with Downtown Get Down, and any of the events downtown.
Yeah, my, thanks for all the work on this. I think it's really a lot better with all the clarifications and reduced number of licenses types and everything. The only question I'd had when I read through it the first time was kind of confusing, a few confusion about some of the age groups and things, and it sounds like you're addressing that. But now that Dennis brought up this all ages live performance thing, I'm thinking it should match pretty closely what our adult entertainment restrictions match, and I'm wondering, I mean, nudity at station theater is permitted, because it's not obscene and everything like that. So, would that same standard apply to somebody with an all ages live performance event rider?
I would hope so.
Okay.
Obviously, we don't know what somebody's going to do until they do it and what they interpret it. The First Amendment, nude dancing is considered an art form, which is protected, but to a far lesser extent than, let's say, religious or political speech. So, there are some. But it can be within a degree regulated, and as I say, this language parallels what we provide in our zoning ordinance for adult entertainment establishments within whatever districts they're allowed.
Okay, and there wouldn't be any, the other thing, I was wondering if there'd be a conflict with, like, a theater license versus a Class A license with all ages live performance should be basically equivalent, right? A theater rider, or whatever.
I mean, we could include similar language in the theater license, because obviously that is a live performance. But they're typically, but they're theatrical, I think the way the license is written is it's a theatrical performance, rather than an exotic dancing performance.
Okay.
I mean, for instance, they may decide to put on the play Abelard and Eloise, and there is a nude scene in that one, at least in the London production there was.
Yeah, Jared?
But, Bill, like I was telling Dennis, the all ages rider doesn't apply. I don't know if your question was about that, but if you have a theater license, you don't need to apply to one to be promoting and have people under the age of 18 in your event with what you're doing.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if there was a distinction we were making there between what you could do in a theater and what you could do with all ages live performance, and maybe there should be, I don't know, I just haven't...
Or if the theater wanted to sell wine during breaks in their performance?
Well, that's why they would pursue the TH license, for sure, so that they could do that. But they will not, they will never need to apply for an all ages rider for their event, because it doesn't apply to them. They don't have an age restriction on attendance.
That rider is for the licenses that don't allow people under the age of 18. That's another way to look at it, which is Class A.
With the exception of the gaming hall G2 license, because state law prohibits people under the age of 21, which includes obviously some adults, 20, 19, and 18-year-olds, in an establishment with gaming terminals, unless they are segregated and blocked off through one of several means outlined in the gaming boards regulations. If they meet those, that's fine. If an establishment, let's say Class A, decides, even though they may allow, under our ordinance, 19, 20-year-olds, 18-year-olds in, but they decide, no, they're going to be strictly 21 and over patrons, they don't need to segregate or block off their gaming terminals, because the whole facility is blocked off to 18, 19, and 20-year-olds.
Anyone else for discussion? Okay, so, I'll, oh.
Wait, can I just, can I just summarize what I think I've heard everybody say that we'll be bringing back to you? We'll be looking at show ends, to be consistent with our curfew. So, there's a Sunday through Thursday, show ends at 10, out by 11. Friday, Saturday, show ends at 11, out by midnight. We'll retain 18-year-old entries, so that's no change. We'll be looking at the 60-40 split for food and alcohol, what the basis for that was. I'm noticing we've got languages, entertainment, live entertainment and live performance, we ought to make sure the wording is all consistent there. And, we cleared up the MB1, I think, was that the major issues?
And rename F to FM.
Oh, F to FM.
Farmers.
And the other one we're looking at is possibly another BYOB to accommodate music venues.
And unyet, as of, unyet-named license to be brought forward.
Okay, and we will bring this back to committee of the hall in two weeks.
Okay, we got to take a vote on that. So, we're, I know we...
Kept it in committee.
Moved to have it, to keep it in committee. Is there a recommendation as to how long we keep it in committee?
It goes to the, so just approve the motion to keep it.
Okay, so, we're going to approve the emotion, the emotion, the motion to keep it in committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, the genie has it. Now, is there something, do I need to say anything else? Okay, so, seeing that there's nothing else, now can I say that? Okay, before the city committee of the hall, then we shall adjourn.